As an attorney, I welcome you to this monthly council meeting. Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional and original inhabitants of this land. All persons in attendance are advised that its council policy should record council meetings in accordance with council's legal policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made on the public council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be launched through the council's YouTube channel. Item one is apologies, and we have an apology this evening by councillor Lake. Item two is declarations of interest, and I'll now ask councillors to defer any declarations of interest in the United States.
Yes, Mayor, you do. Item 5.10, I'm a member of the Devonport Country Club, and I would not believe in that.
Thank you, councillor Lake. Are there any other declarations of interest in the United States? Yes, sir. Councillor Millstone, and now councillor Jarman. Item 3.22, 3.22. Thank you, councillor Millstone. Councillor Alexia.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll declare an interest in item 4.3 on agenda. I do have dealings with the Young Potato Factory, but I would not believe in the amendment.
Thank you, councillor Alexia. I didn't ask councillor Millstone to move it. And I too will declare an interest in item 5.10, the motion. Item, my husband is a social member of the public club, but I will not believe in them. More back at the chair. I bring out declarations. Oh, councillor Perry.
May I just note that councillor Alexia declared an interest in item 4.3, which has now been changed. You said 4.2, I'm going to go that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for those declarations. Item three is procedural matters, 3.1 is confirmation of the previous units.
So moved.
Second.
Councillor Millstone, councillor Perry.
I'm in, procedure, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor.
Nothing, thanks, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions? Ask councillor Millstone.
Consider closing.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. Item 3.2 is public question time, and item 3.2.1 is responses to questions raised at previous meetings. Do I have a move of place?
So moved.
Councillor Millstone, thank you. Councillor Millstone, thank you. Councillor Millstone, any comment?
No, they're all there for people sitting.
Thank you, councillor Millstone. Any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Millstone to close.
Consider closing.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. I know councillor Millstone has given a clear group of this item. Thank you. Item 3.2.2 is questions I noticed from the public.
So moved. Second.
Councillor Perry.
Artur and report, ma'am, thank you.
Councillor Millstone.
Nothing, good, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Perry.
Consider closed.
I'll put the motion, all those in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Any other questions? Item 3.2, my parents' request is to get our notice from the public, an opportunity for members of the public gallery to come to the microphone and ask questions. And, which is councillor, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. My name's Douglas Jenny, 23 Watkinsont Street, Devonport. Unmeted road markings. I've been talking about Stuart Street between Fenton Street and Gunn Street as a good example of parking bay plots to better use a curb space since 2015-16 budget suggestions, and nothing has happened. What is the criteria that is used to put parking bays on Don Road? That's question one. And question two is, when will Stuart Street get the parking plots?
Thank you, Mr. Jenny. We will take that on notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Gally? Councillor Millstone, thank you. Item 3.3 is questions I noticed from councillors. And at the time of the agenda compilation, there were no questions from councillors. Item 3.4 notices of motion, and item 3.4.1 is a notice of motion re-erected for misconduct. And the motion has been approved by councillor Jarman, who will look in the motion, councillor Jarman.
Certainly, and thank you.
Do I have a second there?
Second.
Councillor Holst, thank you. Councillor Jarman.
Thank you. Look, I think this pretty much is self-explanatory, obviously. I think a lot of people are aware of what's going on currently. I don't mean to make a lot about it. I just think it's time that we showed support. There's been a lot going on over the last 12 months probably that we're looking into getting the code of conduct reviewed. There is a major review going on at Legat at the moment for us, really a lot to do with council. Twice, we've put up a notice of motion from this council in particular, Legat AGMs, about asking that councillors at least have a national police check as part of the criteria when they're putting their hand up to be on council. It doesn't get voted for. A lot of councils do vote, but most of the majority do not vote for it. Love to know what they've got to hide. It's just to say that we're meant to be leaders of the community. We're voted in by the public. We're meant to do the right thing. I take a lot of pride in this position, and I don't take it lightly. And I just think that if somebody has done something wrong or has been found guilty and then still thinks that they should be a leader in the community at the same time and hold a position, we should be able to say to that person, enough's enough, it's time to go on your bike. And obviously, that can't be done. I share the frustrations at Minyard Waratah currently with some of the other councillors. And I certainly support them, and I just think it's time. And I did note that the mayor in Burnie has put up a similar notice of motion going to their next meeting as well, in the same vein. So it's certainly not something that we do lightly. I just think it's time that we got things sorted out so that it's a little bit clearer. It's very interesting. Until COVID, I could have been asked any time to go to school and attend an assembly there. Did not have to have a national police check, did not have to have a working with vulnerable card. And when I spoke to one of the principals about that, I said, well, I actually do have both, and you're very welcome to them. And they said, but you're a councillor, surely that would have been part of the checks and balances for you to become a councillor. And I said, no. This is where it's just completely, it's crazy. We're at that local government level, we're in a position of trust, and I think we need to get it cleared up. So I'm sure that my fellow councillors will feel similar. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jarman. Councillor Holst.
My experience so far with the code of conduct has been a dog's breakfast. It's called a badly, and I think a view is needed. So far, I think it's not much of a kangaroo court. If you don't like their results, you nearly have to go to this program brought to do with it, as many councils have actually done so. So I'll support the review. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, ma'am. You're always supporting the motion. I understand councillor Jarman has a meeting with two high-level people in Tasmania in relation to this particular motion this Friday. So well done to councillor Jarman for getting on the front foot. I think the irony of the code of conduct framework that we operate within is that it is more than willing to take on lots and lots of little cases that perhaps don't have as much significance in the community as something they do. But where an act of grave misconduct, I mean, I'm assuming that councillor Jarman's referring to some issues west of here in recent times, the code of conduct framework is silent and has no powers to deal with that kind of serious misconduct, which really is quite an irony and just makes, as, not to use councillor Holst's expression, but makes the code of conduct really something, dog's breakfast, I think councillor Holst has said, it's something that really needs to be addressed. I don't think the review we're going through now will address it to that level, but the fact that we can't deal with cases of serious misconduct that fall well outside community expectations is an indictment on the framework as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jarman. Councillor Millstone.
Thank you, ma'am. I also will be supporting the motion. I understand the intent in which the mover is making this motion, and I agree with the previous speakers. The current code of conduct pretty much will deal with frivolous and vexatious accusations, if you like, which seem to occupy a lot of time and resources, but when something that is proven in a particular level of court, it doesn't have any teeth to take any action. It just doesn't make any sense, and it doesn't address it. So I commend councillor Jarman for bringing much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Alexia.
Thanks, ma'am, ma'am. I'll be supporting this motion from councillor Jarman. Also, I think I'm fairly new on council, I'm one of the new members on council, and I was quite surprised that I didn't need a police check or anything, background check on myself before entering council as well. And then we see some issues that rise up and get raised by other councils and things that happen. And I think, how could this happen? Not the government. It does. If there's anyone who can help me do things for the future, I'd just try to sit for.
Thank you, councillor Millstone.
Well done, councillor Jarman for raising this. I think it's really important and a great reward everybody has to say. I'm just wondering whether there's actually two matters that we're speaking to here, and one is the code of conduct. But perhaps the other is the procedures to become a elected member, and whether we do need to feather out the two within the motion to write some votes.
Thank you. Councillor Jarman, you don't have the opportunity to close at that point. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. It's amazing that there is no real qualifications or checking on people who become elected members. My past life as a teacher, we had something called a teacher registration, of which they checked quite a few things, and got to be deemed suitable to actually be a good leader to teach. And something like that would certainly help us, I imagine, just to raise the professionalism and the expectations that community would hold for elected members. So, you know, I think just the two separate a bit, the two, and, you know, the pre-qualification check, or if you want to call it that, to hold the role of councillor would be a really good thing to say. I will be supporting it. Hopefully, that will follow through.
Thank you. Just re-reading the motion, I think it covers both of those issues that we've been talking about, sort of that. But the existing legislation is inadequate, and I think that could cut off on the conga with the two different, I guess, tangents that we're going on. But I will ask councillor Jarman to close the debate. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for everybody supporting us. I'm certainly not surprised. Every volunteer, doesn't matter whether you're in a party club or working with people who are vulnerable, every volunteer has to have a national police check. If you work with anybody that's vulnerable in the community, you have to have a working with vulnerable card. You have to have those checks and balances just to be a volunteer. And we're on council, and we don't have to do anything. It's just our practice. It certainly is something, and I thank you councillor Millstone for clarifying it all. I'm hoping to speak at Legat next week, hoping to get Nick Street's ear so that we can get him to see that as well. I just think it should be sorted out before this next election. But we'll see, because anyone can have a look at my national police record. It'd be very amusing for everybody. But I've got nothing to hide. So for those people that won't vote for, every time we've brought up for a national police check at the AGM, I'd just love to know what they're hiding. It makes me very, very angry. So you've got nothing to hide. Put it out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the debate and put the motion.
All those in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillor Jarman.
Thank you.
Item 4 is planning authority matters, and I now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Landys Planning Improvements Act 1992, but consideration of agenda items 4.1 to 4.4. Councils required by application 8.3 of the Law for Common Meeting Procedures Regulations of 2015 to deal with items as a planning authority under the loophole of 1993 listed country manner. While I notice I can do it without this meeting, the council in its capacity has a planning authority. Item 4.1 is PA2022.075, according to Act 1994. There is a recommendation.
So moved.
Councillor Millstone.
Second.
Councillor Perry. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, ma'am. I think this one will be a fairly quick and easy one. The recommendation is not to approve, which is the common sense approach.
Thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, ma'am. The three dot points in the recommendation pretty much sum it up. This particular building doesn't belong in a residential area on both sides of the road, both sides of the street. The house itself just doesn't belong there, and the decision on the recommendation is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Millstone to close the debate.
Consider closing, ma'am.
Thank you. Put motion, all those in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 4.2 is PA202.072, 172 Shippware Lane, straight, and a destination by reserve. Is a recommendation needed? They'll ask to consider.
So moved.
Councillor Millstone.
Second.
Councillor Ennis. Thank you. Councillor Millstone.
Again, ma'am, pretty much a common sense approach yet again. It is conditional, so the repandent will have to meet other conditions alongside of this particular application.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
I think put it away.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Perry.
Thanks, ma'am. Look, I agree with councillor Murphy and this actual application will enhance that area no end, so it's a good result. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close the debate.
Thank you, ma'am. I concur with councillor Perry. It will make a significant impact in the amenity of that particular area and on that particular business. It is a thriving precinct or an area of growth in Devonport, and it only makes common sense that someone should be able to get out in inclement weather and be undercover to actually do some killing.
That being the case, I will put the motion, all those in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 4.3 is PA202.09, Resource Processing Act 2361, Alton Street. And I know that councillor Alexia has to clear the notice, but we're not being ready for room. There is a recommendation for us there to consider, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Councillor Holst. Councillor Millstone.
Thank you, ma'am. Very detailed report. As noted in the report, it is disappointing that the repandent has undertaken some works without approval. But in retrospect, we will be able to approve those through this process, and that is the recommendation. There was a number of representations, and it is conditional that those recommendations are met within that. So to address those particular issues.
Thank you. Councillor Holst.
Yes, I concur.
Councillor Holst, you could be my partner.
I concur with the previous speaker. It is a pity that they didn't do what was required in the last recommendation when it was passed. So I think we need to make sure that there are no mental noise and so forth that hasn't been fixed up. It was part of the conditions before. This can be done now. I concur with that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Alexia.
Thanks, ma'am, ma'am. Yeah, this topic has been raised to my attention quite a fair few times. Quite a fair few residents have been visiting me regarding this. And I just wanted to say that I probably have a dozen questions that need to be answered, and I had a meeting with Alex, and all those questions have been answered. Thanks very much to Alex. There is quite a fitty history with that site there. I wish I had to make that picky.
Thank you. And I still have to add to Mr. Murphy, our planning officer.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Are there any other comments, questions?
No, we're not. Thank you. This is tying up a little bit to it. Thank you. And look, yeah, just to reiterate, councillor Alexia, we certainly did speak to Alex Mountney beforehand. I advise with the people that have sent in representations, it gets a bit frustrating when you see someone just goes ahead and does something and then comes back and then asks for permission to do what they're already doing. It's just a bit of a nightmare for us, but I think what we need to see is that as a council, we're going to make sure that all those checks and balances have to be done. All those things that are in there that are being recommended have to be seen to and done properly. And we just need to be aware of those people that live in the area and have respect for their situation. It's not easy. They certainly do live off of the factory, and they always did a lot of those people. But now it's a different type of factory, it's a different owner, and owner needs to just literally do as his toll and comply with all those different regulations and requirements, and to make sure that we are respecting what people who live in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Millstone to close the debate.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you for all the previous speaker's comments, and it's well highlighted. The council will work with the operator on the site to ensure that it does comply with the pathfinder agreement that does exist. Having said that, I'll consider closing.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 4.4 is AM2022.01 and PA2022.024, Commander Amendment Development Application 4133, New Road, and Data. Do we have a move of place?
So moved. Second.
Councillor Jarman, just go. And councillor Perry. Thank you, councillor Millstone.
Thank you. Look, really pleased to see this, moving right along with this application. We've certainly had a bit of a workshop previously about what can be done in that area. It's land that's going to be put to really good use. There's certainly been a lot of questions asked, a lot of things sorted out. And I can't wait to see what happens there. I think it's going to be a good thing for the area, a good thing for the organisation that owns the land as well. They're putting it to good use, and I'm really pleased to see it being developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, ma'am. Look, I concur with councillor Jarman's comments. We were privy to quite a detailed workshop from Devonfield Enterprises. This particular amendment and the other dot points in the recommendation will allow Devonfield Enterprise to get on with the business they're running their business. Times change, things are different to what they were 50 years ago, and they recognize that and full credit to them for doing so. And I think this will certainly assist Devonfield Enterprise move forward in the next 50 years. So no hesitation supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Millstone.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, it's a positive step forward for Devonfield Enterprises, there's no doubt about that. But more importantly, it's a fantastic opportunity for our community. So yet again, it's good to see when people come together and come up with really, really good outcomes around land use.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. Yeah, I commend Devonfield on coming up with this bold proposal to change the structure of their business and to make it more, as, make it more appropriate for the times we live in. So graduation, I think it'll be excellent up there.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia.
Thanks, ma'am, ma'am. I've been with all the previous councillors. It's a pretty exciting time, I think, and that bit of land there is going to get to, it's good use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Jarman to close the debate.
Consider it closed. Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. This is to end our planning authority matters. We're going to move on to reports. And item 5.1 is financial management strategy. And item 5.1 is financial management strategy for the next 10 years to come.
So moved.
Council Murphy.
Second.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and also. May I just hold this?
Hold that thought, Ken.
Hold that thought. Yeah, obviously, it's very pleasing to read a document such as this. It's a positive result. It's been achieved and it's promising moving forward. The council being in a strong financial position. In coming years, council's forecasting more surpluses. And this is obviously an enviable position to be in, to be quite, quite able to demonstrate that. It's also worth mentioning council's position with respect to the forward capital works. And the fact that council will have sufficient funds to maintain its existing assets and others going forward. Again, through this report, council's able to demonstrate sound fiscal management and is continuing to positive focus on debt reduction, as highlighted in the graphs in the report. I'm confident that with council, we improve the fiscal responsibility. The community can have no doubt, continue, have confidence in us being able to continue to achieve similar results into the future. And yet it can be the envy of many of government authorities in the state.
Thank you. Council Murphy. Council Perry.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, Council Murphy's pretty well summed it up. But I think it's really gratifying to have those underlying surpluses between now and 2032th and 10 year period. Particularly given the fiscal responsibility we've shown over the last seven budgets. We'll speak more of that later on. But we are, we are not projecting any years without surplus, which of course is a fantastic position to be in. And we don't just make that judgment to satisfy those who need to be satisfied. They are, they are backed in science and built around science and maths. So that's, that's a really good report and a credit to our management team. And I guess the councillors for applying the rigor that we have to financial matters in the last, well, past seven budgets at least and some time before that. So it's a really good report and welcome to everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Perry. Any other comments? Council John.
Thank you. I just want to pass on a huge congratulations first to Kim Piggles. Definitely our general manager, of course, but I just know the work that's undertaken, a lot of people don't see that. We do. And I don't need to be Kim or our general manager in having to bring it to us. We're all different personalities. We've all got different ways of understanding everything. And every year, they do make our job very easy because there is a lot of work undertaken before it even gets to our level. And when it gets to our level, they do their utmost in helping us to understand and know where we're going. And I'm so proud of where we're at. We've had Covid for two years affecting so much and what we've had to do and how we've had to help the community, help different people that have paying rents. Whatever we can do, we put our hand up and say, come to us. We'll see what we can do to help you. And yet here, here we have an amazing budget that's been put together and we've got surplus to show. And this strategy going forward is putting us in a really good place as we go through. It makes our job look very easy and I must say, it is, because I certainly would have liked to have their job. So I just want to say congratulations to you and your team. And the way you put it together every year, it just gets better and better. Can't wait till we show it off in, at the breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ennis.
Again, certainly gives many of us plenty of comfort knowing that we are in a very good financial position going forward. Understanding that with all of these strategies, things change. But the projections at the moment are nice and solid and looks good. So congratulations to everyone involved. It's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ennis, hence the necessity for us to recommend the year, which is what we do. Are there any other comments, questions? Council Exa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with all the councillors. Council Murphy summed it up pretty well too. I think that from a council point of view, listening into all the discussion that's been happening regarding the policy, it's very, it's nice to know that we get those video updates as well. Credit to the team for giving those video updates because it cover a lot of aspects for us, the questions that we have as well. So the video, the video is a good, good job.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll ask Council Murphy to close the debate.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just reiterate. A lot of work does go into the preparations, particular document. But I think it's the high level expertise that we have within the organisation that really, really shines through. And I think, picking up on what Council Ennis said, you know, at the moment, I think at the moment, we didn't improve this, this financial year. We were looking at the surplus of around about 800,000. And we ended up with a 2.4 million dollar surplus. So looking at figures forecast for the next 10 years, if we see those figures do dip down to a reasonable level, I think based on history, I think will be, I'm not sure that bank will be forecasting. I think that's a credit to the team. Having said that, consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried in endlessly. Item 5.2 is our rates and charges policy. There is a recommendation here.
So moved.
Council Holst, thank you. Council Murphy, thank you. Council Holst.
Yes, I think this is another example of how good our staff actually are. I've got us first started a little bit of budgets, I hope to think back in 96. And back then, we used to sit in the town hall up on the stage and we'd have each of the managers give a presentation of their departments. It's completely different now. The IT we use now, the video conferencing for all of it is just so much better than what we had many years ago. So I congratulate the staff, the council for their preparations. Thank you.
Council Murphy.
Yes. Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just want to check we're talking about the right one. Yes, it's obviously a lot of work. Yet again, these decisions have to be made. And I think what's been proposed next agenda item, we'll probably speak to more and nothing further.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, this is essentially just the rates and charges policy per se. It's fair to say when we have revaluations every seven years theoretically, there is a lot more work that goes into rates and charges policy to, to take into consideration all the variances that we need to with fluctuations, evaluations. So this one may have been a little bit more difficult than last year, but it's a mere procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. And since then, for what council says. Are there any other comments, questions? Council Holst to close the debate.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried in endlessly. Item 5.3 is the annual plan and budget estimates.
So moved.
Second.
Council Perry. Council Perry.
Thanks, Mayor. I think this might have been the one that Council Holst was alluding to. But I've, you know, this has been another stellar result from our management team, employees and us councillors as well. And a result that we should all be proud of. Of all the Tasmanian councils that have released their rate setting so far for the coming financial year, that includes all the cities, no others had a one in front of it. Tonight, we get the opportunity to hand down a 1.9% average increase in rates, which is less than one third of the current ABS CBA base CPI. So we're tracking one third of inflation in very difficult time and I think that's a commendable effort. Also, since 2016, the same ABS CPI increases have totaled 17.1%. Seven budgets over the same period, we have increased our rates by 5.52. So again, less than one third of CBA for the same period. And it's worth noting that four of those rates increases were zero. So for four years in a row, we had zero rates increases, which is a phenomenal effort. And I, I don't think any other town or city in Tasmania, certainly not my time on council, and certainly not my time as an adult, have been able to claim that. Yes, we may have started at a high starting point, but still we did it. Now, the question is, how have we been able to achieve this? While continually investing in the Living City project, which we do, we're not compromising on service delivery. We're not compromising on infrastructure spending. We're supporting community groups and clubs through a very difficult couple of years we have been. We're not compromising on balanced budgets or surpluses. And most importantly, that was raised a couple of items earlier. We're not compromising integrity of our insecurity of our 10 year financial management strategy. That is well and truly still intact. If these results don't happen by accident, how have we done it? Well, it's been a combination of continued fiscal responsibility and we're growing the pie by attracting new residents and businesses to our area. Why has the pie grown? The answer, that's two words, living city. I think it's, it's time we acknowledged and it was acknowledged that Living City has achieved so much for this. Yet we made mistakes. We acknowledge that. But Living City, the overarching principle of Living City, has achieved so much for the city of Devonport. And we are in a much better space now than we were 10 years ago in 2012. When the hotel and waterfront park are completed, it will go to another level again. So we're not only will we be attracting residents and businesses, we'll be attracting tourists and the convention market. So there's a lot of upside to what's going on in the city of Devonport. But it hasn't happened by accident. These things don't happen by accident. And I really am proud of what we've been able to achieve against the odds in recent years, like most other councils. But we continue to do such good work in the financial space without trashing the integrity of our 10 year financial plan. So I hope, I'm sure all other councillors will support this. And I hope they agree with my sentiments and congratulations to everyone that's been involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Perry. Council Murphy.
It's going to be hard to follow.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Council Perry, because it's right on the money, literally. It is. It's such a, you know, how good is it for councils to live with such a positive outcome? Obviously, it's in the media every second minute now, it seems, and on social media, whatever else. The cost of living pressures and everything else and what that's doing to communities. And the fact that we're able to keep that general rate rise to 1.9% is hidden. Yeah, especially in this current climate. And obviously councils are immune to sort of external cost pressures neither. So we've got to absorb those costs as well and to be able to be in the position that we're in. But more importantly, the buzz around town that why do people want to come and live here? And it's pretty much basically because we've got something going on and we're creating employment. You know, the forecast, you know, $26 million in just capital expenditure work in the next 12 month period is a significant investment. And that investment is in jobs and that investment is in our community. And I think this is the one thing that Council Perry is selling, Living City and the principles of Living City. And it acknowledges mistakes were made, but it still has been the catalyst for where we are at the moment. It's just, you know, a really positive outcome. I think, I think the executive team and all the, all the staff that helped in that process, and there are a number of people in the, in the, in behind the scenes who do a lot of work within the audit committee, their external auditors, and ensuring that we were able to achieve these targets and keep on track, you know, being transparent and what have you in our decision-making process. So well done. It's, I think we will be yet again, probably the envy of a lot of local governments along the north west coast and within the state. And I think it's, it puts us in good stead for the future, especially with, you know, almost half a billion dollars, half a billion dollars to be spent within the next five years on infrastructure building and within the community. I think that's a massive effort with government funding and private investment. So what on?
Thank you, Council Murphy. Council John.
Thank you. To be honest, I was looking forward to budget time here, knowing that we had evaluation coming up. I really thought that this would be the year that we had to start making apologies for what our rate rise could have been. And I was most impressed when we workshopped what could be, what could, could it could have been. And to say that we literally, I only had to say, please sharpen your pencil. And let's see if we can do 1.9 and that's what has come across. And we've been able to present that. It's just incredible because I certainly wasn't looking forward to what the outcome could have been. During evaluation year for us to only have 1.9%, with that CPI being 5.8, it is amazing. And Council Perry, thank you for just saying, how did we do that? How? Like, that's what people are going to be asking us. So thank you for reiterating why we are where we're at. And to say what it's been since 2016 is incredible. I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of people wanting to take a leap out of this book because it is pretty incredible. So hats off to everybody. And well done to the councillors because we really have adjusted really well, got into that nice, we get into four years just before an election and we're all got this nice team around us. And things change, I know, but it's been really good. I've really enjoyed this four years. We've had some doozies. So we've had some interesting times fighting over prices and rate rises and all that type of thing. And that's good because that's what we're meant to do. It's meant to be robust. But this, this year has been really, really easy and I'm really pleased with the outcome. So well done, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Exa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The previous councillor's speech there, it is, is pretty amazing. I just wanted to touch on just one aspect that Council Perry mentioned, that was the Living City. One little story that I'll have is I had a spec with a business owner in Devonport. And he approached me and said he wants to expand his business. And I said, well, if you want to expand your business, he answered, the Living City, that's why. We come here because Devonport's a growing city. So that's a fund share, wants a lot of fund share of councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? And you, Council, ask Council Perry to close the debate.
Yeah, well, thank you to fellow councillors for their comments. Yeah, I reiterate, it really is a great result and much respect to our management team and us. Because we've done our little bit. We're not, we're not the maths behind it all. But we, but we do understand where we need to be and how we need to get to certain places. And in full credit, in full credit to everyone involved, it could perhaps be my last budget and would be a great note to go out on if it gets accepted tonight or adopted tonight. And I'm pretty confident of all of it. So thank you. Good luck.
Perhaps. I'll close the debate and put the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried in endlessly. Thank you, everyone. Item 5.4 is our signing strategy for the next five years. Do they have a move?
So moved.
Second.
And thank you, Mayor. Look, it's a very detailed report yet again. We've gone through a very open and transparent process by engaging with the community and seeking their input in relation to that. So realistically, this has been workshop. There's really not too much more there to add. It is a fairly detailed report and it aligns with our strategic plan.
Thank you. Council John.
Yes, looking forward to this being implemented now. There's been a lot of work done. We've been involved on the way. The process has been really good. And I just look forward to seeing what we, what comes out of this strategy and what new branding Devonport's going to have going forward with the different signs around the place. It will be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Exa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah. I think it's great. I think the strategy is, it's a great strategy for the city because coming back a few years, you wouldn't have seen all the signs being all the same logo and the colouring and it all sort of blends in with the whole of the city. So it doesn't matter if you're in East Devonport Street and Devonport, the sign is all the same and you've got a good understanding of where you are and where you're going to. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a good reminder to read the strategy with others in the next year, but we have come from the previous strategy. So. we have come from the previous strategies, so I'm really pleased that we're continuing that work and continuing to build people finally in our area, amazing city. Councillor Murphy, your colleagues?
I continue to oppose, yeah.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Next. Motion is carried unanimously. Item 5.5 is our public art policy and strategy.
Same move.
And councillor Jarman, councillor Holst.
Yes, these are due for renewal. Parts of them were out of date, and council has workshopped them, the committees, public art committee and strategies looked into it. There's been some public input from the art community, which is very important, so I recommend, it's the recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Jarman?
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of work being done, because quite literally, we put together a public art committee all those years ago because of some contentious public art that we have in the area that the community wasn't happy about, and fair enough to. We realised that there was a lot of control about things that were going to be perhaps either gifted to the council, or well-meaning people put a GoFundMe together and come up with this big awful piece of art that no one likes. We just need checks and balances again of how to go about it. We tried our, we tried our hardest back in the day, it just wasn't a really great document. It was very well-meaning but very rushed, I will agree to that, I was part of that, but Mr Dobson comes along and he steers us in the right direction, he knows what he's talking about, and he's been, you know, pivotal behind this. And, yeah, we workshopped it, came up with different ways to come up with different words of what we wanted to be in this, and it's always an interesting, we've got different people, and trying to get one cohesive plan together, but we got there. So, well done, and really pleased to be having this document so that we can go ahead, we've got the right guidelines now, so it's good. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jarman.
No, sorry.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to follow up on some of the thoughts that councillor Jarman just mentioned, and I think, yeah, a lot of work has definitely gone into it by Mr Dobson, he should commend him on that, and also the way that he presents to fellow members, very easy and understanding, and he covers every point that he can consider, and well done to Mr Dobson.
Thank you. I would like to also acknowledge that community members have given their time to be part of this process, bringing their expertise to the table, and then to discuss very robustly the, what we want in this strategy, so it's direct to have it, to have a guiding policy and strategy over the next, so, can you say that? We'll ask councillor Easter to hold the bag.
Same move, closed.
Put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Next. Motion is carried unanimously. Item 5.6 is the city council's tourism strategy for 2022 to 2025.
Same move.
Second. Thank you, Mayor. An important strategy for our council, and more importantly, for the direction in which we want to take it from a tourism perspective. The report, documentation that's attached with it, obviously highlights a number of issues and inconsistencies and failings that we've had over a number of years, and we're looking to achieve, and then positive result. I think now we've moved in the right direction with North by Northwest being involved and strategically aligning our tourism directives and goals and vision with the T21, the Tasmanian Visitor Economy Strategy, which by the state government. So those priorities include the rebuilding visitations and supporting our people and restoring access and shaping our future. I think that pretty much sums up what we need to do within our geographical location. We are still seen as the gateway to Tasmania by the touring motorist, if you like, although it's becoming increasingly difficult to get on, the TTI vessels to actually come here and visit the state. So, that in itself is an extremely good number and a positive position being. What this does, this strategy provides us with a clear direction in where we want to go and what we want to do, so I would commend our councillors to support it.
Thank you. Councillor Perry is the second.
I would pretty much concur with everything councillor Murphy said, and I do know this strategy is just for three years, and I think that's perhaps a good thing, because in three years' time, Devonport will be going gangbusters, and it'll give us an opportunity to reset on that particular strategy.
Same move.
That's it?
Same move.
Yeah, we're one, that's right, but it's a good strategy, the three-year period will allow us to reset and meet the conditions and the market and the demands that will be about in 2025, and I'm sure they'll be, they'll operate in what they are now. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jarman? Same. Councillor Holst?
Yes, I'm pleased that this has now come back under our council's control, strategy on. Previously, we used to do a lot of this work with our surrounding councils, and it's probably a bit of useful resource sharing, which our surrounding councils, for whatever reason, decided that they wouldn't be part of it anymore, so I think that's an opportunity that has disappeared, and I'd say that going forward, this will serve us well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor Alexia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it is a great strategy, and a strategy that I look at, especially in the area where I'm in, East Devonport, which councillor Murphy mentioned, we are the gateway to Tasmania for a lot of tourists visiting our state. We're still waiting for that welcome to Devonport experience to happen, and I hope in the next few years, once the development happens, that we do have the experience with. People exiting the spirit of Tasmania can see what a beautiful city we are, instead of driving away, we can keep them tourists to stay in the city and visit the city. Obviously, with the Living City, the way it's developed at the moment, and the walkway off the hotel is really going to be a light opener for a lot of tourists, and hopefully we'll get them to visit the city and stay in the city a bit longer. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Councillor Dennis?
Yeah, I think it's really important that we have a tourism strategy, and because, you know, lots of Tasmania relies on tourism, you know, we're a tourist state, we have a lot of, a lot of good things for people to offer, but we really need to highlight what happens in Devonport, and I think it's good that we are adopting this, and hopefully, as councillor Perry said, in the future, in 2025, we'll be reviewing a completely different landscape.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you to fellow councillors for their comments, but it is worth noting, and almost worth mentioning, that the, the volume of work that the CEO of North by Northwest has done in, you know, creating a foothold in the current environment with operators and practitioners in the hospitality industry, and what they're actually able to provide, which I think if operators can take advantage of, we'll see them succeed in the future, and with this policy, we can help. Consider closing.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Next. Motion is carried unanimously. Item 5.7 is our nature strip policy. Do they have a move, please?
Same move.
Councillor Perry, was it councillor?
Here.
Councillor Meele, move. Councillor Murphy, same. Thank you.
That's a good word. Thank you. What to say now? I lost my train of thought. Thank you. This is a definite policy that is needed, if you drive around, there are a range of different nature strips that are starting to pop up, and people are getting very creative with their nature strip, so it's good to see that we do have a policy to control some of those violations. Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Mayor. Gee, which wasn't exciting seeing some of the responses. There was some very, very good information and some very far-out there ways of how people are going to deal with their nature trips. Hopefully, they're shipping over pumpkins. But anyway, no, it's good that we've gone through a very open process, I think it will alleviate a lot of issues in relation to providing council the opportunity to, but yeah, this is, something's obviously been needed for quite some period of time, and yeah, those 33 respondents, they were pretty good answers to sort of providing us with information in that consultation period.
Thank you. Yes, this is an area of interest for some people, but it gives us, I guess, a basis to work on our, if it comes, I'll do, I'll do a base to have a policy that people, that they can follow, and show that we're prepared. Any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Meele, how's it going?
Thank you. It's great to see that the policy is really easy to read too, so it should be quite easy for residents to follow. Consider it passed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Next. Motion is carried unanimously. Item 5.8 is the upgraded Devonport residential growth strategy.
Same move.
Councillor Murphy? Thank you. Your second.
I'll shake it in.
Councillor Perry, councillor Murphy.
This one's the most important one, we'll probably, with the exclusion budget, we'll do it for all. This strategy is the necessary link in the continuing growth of our city, is the important step to follow on from the Living City master plan. It now must become the primary focus of council to capitalise on the investment made and to continue to support that investment into the future. We are growing, and people want to live here, because things are happening here. There's positivity, there's growth, there's employment, but most importantly, people are discovering this is a great place to live. A lot of work has gone into developing this strategy, and I must congratulate those involved, especially the director of city growth, Mr Matthew Skirby, and project officer Mark McCoy, they've done a tremendous amount of work, and I don't think people, people wouldn't know how long this particular project's been going on for, and there has been a significant amount of work done. We're undertaking a number of workshops throughout the process and consulting with the community yet again, which I think is a positive step for this organisation. Reading the report and the feedback provided gave you the confidence that we're in the right time to implement this strategy, and when you look at the detail that is in that strategy and the reports that came, the comments that came with it, it really does show that going in this direction is the right way to go. And if I can, I'm just waiting for the computer to catch up. Just look at those, some of those graphs in that report, it really does highlight that, you know, population growth, yes, people think that's a great idea, but more importantly, the question, do you think there is adequate residential land supply for housing to make the current and foreseeable demand? And there was a resounding no, 70% of the respondents was no, and when you look at the comments that were made around that, it's quite easily, you know, clearly a lack currently needs to be addressed urgently, or else affordability will suffer, and that's a key principle. If we're able to increase supply, we're then potentially able to alleviate financial pressures, because we'll actually then, we supply, increase demand, which potentially can see decreasing However, it was somewhat disappointing that state growth, a state growth representative whom would be oblivious to what was actually happening in North of Bridgewater attempted to rain on our parade. It is in this continued negativity about how well we are going here on the northwest coast that is disappointing, and demonstrates the continued trend to hold us back. And they need to get out of there, need to get out more, and accept that not everyone wants to live in Hobart, and the fact that's probably a hit. The opposite. Our growth target may be aspirational, but what is the target without a goal? More importantly, I believe, is achievable, and the author of the letter that we received is relying upon outdated information with the regional residential growth strategy, you know, 11 years old, and not relevant because of pessimistic forecasts, but this is the type of information the boffins are relying upon in Hobart, and that is what's holding us back. They refer to a demand and supply is monitored over time. Well, we've had enough time, we don't have any available land available. You know, most regional councils, or most councils along the northwest coast have anywhere 10 years' worth of supply of developed land. We've got less than four. People are demonstrating they want to live here, and the opportunities exist, and the reality check for them is that the strategy highlights the fact that Devonport and its municipal boundaries do not have enough land available. The process is difficult, and this does not occur at the rate required. So, the developer wants to come to Devonport, wants to develop some land, and the problem is though, they're then hamstrung through a process, which again is another state government issue, with regards to if the local government authority can use a statewide planning scheme to approve a develop, but then the developer can't do anything for an extended period of time, because it has to go to Hobart, to the Tasmanian planning commission, what's the point of having a statewide planning scheme? If our expert planners can't sit there and have an application meet the criteria as outlined in that plan, what's the point? So, you know, might go towards addressing some of the more important community issues, such as affordability and supply. The government comes out and tells us it wants to build 10,000 more houses. I'm not too sure whether they'll fit in one in Hobart, and there is somewhere else outside of it. We're a great place to live, and if we continue to grow and provide the necessary mechanisms for that growth, our community will benefit with increasing growth, we obtain more professionals, we obtain more childcare workers, we obtain more teachers, we obtain more police and public and emergency services personnel. That's what the community is based around, and without the opportunity for those people to live here, they're not going to come here, we won't see that growth. So again, I pose the question, who is best placed to make the decisions on the best way forward for our community? A careful, considered, fact-based, detailed strategy, or a bureaucratic boffin from Hobart?
Councillor Perry?
Gosh, thank you for following up. I agree with everything councillor Murphy said, now, I think I could probably briefly categorise it all, to sum it up by saying, we have an aspiration for a population of 30,000 by 2030, and 35,000 by 2040. Now, for that to happen, clearly we're going to need land zone appropriately for that type of, for the housing that hails those people, and this idea that we are drip-fed X amount of land every now and then by a desktop analyst in Hobart, rather than let the fluid function of supply and demand decide when and where we need land, which is the way it should be, until we get into that situation where supply and demand is the ultimate arbiter on land, residential land, we're going to be hamstrung by this process, who go to all these long-winded reports to say, you can't have any more land, because three towns east of you or west of you have plenty of land. Well, that's not our problem. We have a supply and demand issue in Devonport, and we need to fix it. So we don't need the boffins to fix it, we need supply and demand to fix it. I don't think I can be any clearer than that, in addition to what councillor Murphy said, but it's a really good strategy, and credit to Matt and his team for the work, and let's just hope that some common sense in growing the city of Devonport is shown, when we need transit of land opened up, so that we can meet those aspirations without having to fight for everything along the way. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Perry. Thank you, Councillor Perry. Any other comments? Councillor Alexia.
Thanks, ma'am, ma'am. Councillor Murphy, it's a very, quite great speech here and he really summed everything up there. I just wanted to say to Matthew Skirby that he is, credit to you, Matt. And it's great to have you on council, your ideas that you put forward. I think it's the way to move the city forward and we're lucky to have you on board.
Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. This is another one of those we're looking forward and demonstrating real leadership in this space. To come out with these targets and how we're going to achieve et cetera to continue to grow our city is fantastic. So, well done, Mr Skirby and others who work with you. I think it's, I think it's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Murphy, of course.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, fellow speakers. As I've said, we must embrace this opportunity and move forward. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on paper. Please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item five point nine is partnership agreements.
Same move. Shake it in.
Councillor Perry. Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, ma'am. Well, this report focuses on the renewal, renewal of all existing partnership arrangements, which fall due on the thirtieth of June, twenty twenty-two, and an additional agreement with the Devonport Chamber of Commerce and Industry. It's all in the report. If I need to speak any further on it, to answer any of the questions that are raised or some of the concerns that are raised by any of the fellow councillors, I will, but for now I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
I agree with Councillor Perry. Yes, the, the fourth being the Devonport Chamber of Commerce and Industry. The fact that we do have a review period every twelve months. I think with the KPIs that be put in place, it will improve to us to, to monitor that and, and support the application.
Thank you. Councillor Holster.
Yes, I want to serve it. The Tasmanian Arboretum, I believe, is probably going to be one of our jewels in the crown. We always say Victoria Parade is, but I think in the future, I think the twenty-two thousand we supported with each year is not going to be enough to turn this into the facility that I think it can be in the future. Same with the Devonport Brass Band. I think they struggle. Ten thousand per year, I'd like to see probably in the next budget that we look at some funding for publicity and book teaching and stuff for members of the band. The rest I'm quite happy with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Alexia.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. Just looking at the Chamber of Commerce and Industry, two-term deal of forty thousand dollars. When I originally looked at it, it seemed like a pretty hefty amount there to go to the Devonport Chamber of Commerce. And the designers and members are here in the gallery this evening, which is good to see. I just wanted to highlight probably a couple of points. Back in March twenty twenty, when the Retail Doctor Group approached, or we approached the Retail Doctor Group, Brian Walker was the presenter at the time. I think the report that he analysed for our city was something that he based on a report done in the Bendigo Council in Victoria, which showed the population was probably a hundred thousand more than what we have here. So it was, it was difficult to, to see his perspective from a, a lot larger city than what our city is. Being a business owner for the last thirty-six years in Devonport, I've seen a lot of changes happening in Devonport as well. I'm also a member of the Australian United Retailers Advisory Committee as well. And I do see a lot of changes in the retail industry, especially over the last few years with Covid. And I just wanted to highlight a few, just a few points that Devonport is changing. And it's definitely a growth, growth is coming to the city. It's definitely something that wasn't seen ten years ago, but it has been seen now. The city is moving forward. And the, the chamber, hopefully it all goes well and we'll keep an eye on, making sure that those games will have considered it. Here, the report, I'm sure you guys might have seen the report that was done by Brian Walker. To me, that report is just a generic report. Just read it. To me, it wasn't specifically aimed at Devonport to grow our city larger and bigger than what it is at the moment. That's all, ma'am, ma'am.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Thank you. Councillor Perry, close. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am, and thanks to fellow councillors for their comments. Just in relation to the, the chamber's proposal, proposed partnership agreement, I'm encouraged and confident by the obligations of both parties, performance measures and the key, key milestones, key milestones that are mentioned in their proposal. I think it's, it's time that, it's not uncommon for councillors to support their chamber of commerce, commerce and industry. And certainly at this point in time with, with the waterfront park and the hotel about to come on board, we need to strengthen council, chamber of commerce and industry and, and we can be comforted by the fact that we have in the past, if things aren't working and they're not meeting their KPIs or the intent isn't working as it should be and council will review that midterm annually or whatever the, the case might be to come up with that decision. But let's, let's give this a chance and I'm sure that going forward, what's ahead for the, for the chamber, lots of opportunities in terms of visitation and growth that we certainly are going to make a very good fist of this and I hope everyone supports it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Perry. I'll put the motion. All eyes on paper. Please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item five point one zero is a request for rate remission from the country club. And I know that Councillor Murphy and myself have to agree with this, but we're not being axing the rule. Do I have a mover or a fall? Any of those options, please?
I'll move option three, thanks, ma'am.
Pass it. Councillor Perry and Councillor Perry.
Thanks, ma'am. Yeah, we had a workshop with, with members of the country club along to explain their situation and, and to be fair to them, they have been hit with unusual circumstances because obviously their building is increasing value exponentially and their rates went, went with that. But not so much their, their turnover and business model, primarily because of Covid, I would suspect, and a few other issues, a bit of lag from Covid-related matters. So I think in fairness to them, we can offer them some support that's not ongoing, it's for a three-year period. I think it meets, that meets a compromised middle point of where they would, the support that they requested compared to giving them no support at all. And I think, I think that's a fair, fair place to be and it should be noted that council has provided no significant funds to that project of eight, eight to ten billion dollars. Like the racing club many years ago with a new racetrack in Devonport for about eleven billion dollars and council was not required to provide any funding for that or any support for that. So their, their community assets that have, that have been on boarded through other sources of funding. So we, we should support them in these early stages and ensure that they've got some time to, to get their business model to meet the eight to ten billion dollar facility that they have to generate the funds that they need so that in the future, three years down the track, they'll be able to meet their obligations without that support. I hope other board members or councillors see it that way. I will wait and see. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Perry. Councillor Darlin, second.
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly agree with what Councillor Perry has said. We can have to do much to get an amazing facility out there. All we have to do is back them up, support them, guide them a little bit, but literally they had an amazing committee. They knew, they had vision of what they wanted to achieve out there and it meant a long time coming. I mean, Wood Rising was a pretty old and well-established old place, but a bit sad. All my life it was, it just stayed the same. So it certainly needed a refit and look at it now. I mean, it's an amazing facility. So, you know, my hat goes off to the committee that created that vision and made it happen. So all we can do is, is try to help them. I think this is the best plan going forward to try and just alleviate the problems that they've seen in the last two years. That C-word we don't like. So we certainly know that they aim to be sustainable. They aim to get to that point where they won't need our help anymore. We certainly appreciate that. So I think this is the best way going forward. Cheers.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Ennis.
Yeah, I, I certainly agree that we need to try and support this community sporting club because no one expected it to jump like it did. And, you know, there will have to be some recalibration in the way they go about things. I'm sure that from the discussions we had with them, I'm sure they're working pretty hard to do that. And the, the support that we can, we can give as a council, hopefully will see them through and get going again.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll ask Councillor Perry, the closest.
I thank all councillors for their, their support and comments. And yeah, nothing further. I think I've said it enough on it and let's see the country club go forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on paper. Please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item five point one is endorsement of ownership of our public arts committee. Do I have a move, please?
Same move. Shake it.
Councillor Darlin. Councillor Darlin.
Oh, thank you. Yes, again, congratulations to Mr Dobson for allowing us to say, oh, not a minute. I think we need more people on this committee. He was wonderful in helping us facilitate that. You have to kind of go back to the drawing board. There's a lot of people involved, but really appreciate it. Oh, look at this amazing turnout. There's people that put their hand up. What a shame I couldn't take every single one of them. But look, this is, I think, the, the best way going forward to work with these three people that have been nominated, Jane, Sarah and Tara. And I really look forward to working with them. And please, I, I'm sure that we could put our, extend our laurel brush to the other people and, and say that if they didn't come along to anything and be part of any kind of consultation going forward, we're not going to knock that back either. We're happy for those people to still reach out and tell us their thoughts. We'll try to do some more consultation with the general community out there. So it won't be forgotten that these people put their hand up as well. But going forward, having the three on board will be wonderful and I really look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor.
Thank you. Congratulations to those three nominees for making the committee, the special committee. And it's all got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Holster.
Yes, I've took part in the discussion on those people. I think it was very pleasing that they're professional artists, art teachers and so forth. And the experience will only be very good on those committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll ask Councillor Darlin. I'll consider it. Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on paper. Please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item six is information. Six point three is workshops, briefing sessions, events and us to meeting. Move it, please.
Same move.
Councillor Darlin, Councillor Murphy, Councillor Darlin.
Um, it's all there. We've all been part of those workshops. Thank you.
Ma'am, if I may, and through the mover, just to make an adjustment to as described there. On the sixth of June, Frankie J's tenancy discussions is to be carried forward as that didn't occur on that evening, even though that was scheduled for that evening. And just a correction in relation to the Devonport Country Club, a, a request for rates remission that says submission. Make that change.
I'm happy for that change to be made. What was the other you were wanting to do? Just to say that it's ongoing?
Just in relation to Frankie J's tenancy discussions.
There was some discussion, Councillor.
But I do believe it has been carried forward, ma'am. If that's not, if that's incorrect, I'll stand corrected, but I do believe that is the case. And that they're on.
I don't think, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but.
But it was discussed on that night. That's.
It doesn't make any changes.
Okay.
Considering the, the Tahoe, I'm sure the certis has picked up now.
But mission from submission, I'm happy with it.
Thank you. Those corrections are submitted. And conversations, Councillor Darlin, close.
Councillor Close.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on paper. Please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item six point two is the latest monthly report. Do I have a move?
Same move. Shake it.
Thank you, Madam Ma'am. Again, you've had an extraordinary busy month, as we can see there. I, I was lucky enough to, to attend the Mersey Rider Club because unfortunately I couldn't make the annual dinner there. So I was very warmly received by the club. I just wanted to let you know that the evening was really well. I was very well entertained. I was able to hand out a few trophies on the night, which is really good. And also the club's always asked me to come, ask for a row. So I've never been rowing before, but it's just interesting to go to these sort of things.
You're big headed.
Yeah. But I wanted to just, I went to the, went to the summertime. And also we had the Liverpool Party Gavin Pearce attend the Devonport Soccer Club. Proposal for the three, three and a half billion dollar redevelopment of the Valley Road. Unfortunately, you couldn't make it to that, so I was able to come to that as well, which is really good. Being cyclist is my background. I was able to speak with Matt Buckley from Football Taz, CEO, Drew Smith, the president, and also Gavin Pearce from the Liverpool Party on that day. So it was, it was a busy month for me too. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to thank those who did step in for me for those couple of weeks when I was a bit out of action. And appreciate that I had people that I could call on. So thank you for that. Councillor Murphy, yes, for second.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Obviously Covid's over and done with, by the look of it. So you know, that you're exposing yourself to a lot of it because you're very, very busy at the moment. Ma'am, just in the, attended the, the funding announcement with the then Prime Minister, Scott Morrison. It wasn't Councillor Alexio that pushed him over when he tripped, was it?
Uh, no, I have to bet Councillor Alexio, he wasn't, was on to that. Thank you, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, ma'am. I was going to ask a question along that vein, so I'll leave that. Councillor Alexio, obviously there was a little bit of publicity on about it, so I'll leave it there.
Thank you. I'm saving the hard questions. Thanks very much. Any other comments, questions? I'll ask Councillor Alexio, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Ma'am. No, it wasn't me that tripped, that person. The problem is at the time. I think you were there, ma'am, during that event. I was there.
I wasn't there either.
Okay, two or close, thanks.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes on paper. Please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item six point three is the General Manager's Report for the monthly.
Same move. Shake it.
Perry and Councillor Murphy, continue. Councillor Perry.
Yeah, another good report and lots of other stuff going on, of course, apart from what's in that report. And I refer to both General Manager and yourself, ma'am. Another good report. There's a lot that goes on. I know there's a lot that goes on apart from what's in that actual report. For General, General Manager and for your good self as well. And we're lucky to have you both as our leaders and I'll, I'll regurgitate one of those sayings that I, that I like to come up with. No, no organisation outperforms its leaders. So we're, we're on good footing in that regard. So well done to both of you. Thank you.
Councillor.
Thank you, ma'am. Just two things. Item two point two, good review. You met with Simon, one developer, former share ground sock. Will we be receiving any information in relation to a little bit more around what was discussed there with introduction of one of the key personnel working on the redevelopment project? It seems to have gone a little bit quiet and there isn't as much. and there isn't as much information back out there in the public. So, um, if it's possible, if we could have, um, a briefing note or something in relation to what's happening there. And I, I think I've reiterated on, on councillor Perry, it seems like our executive team and, and some of the leaders we have in the organisation are a lot better than any in the state. And, uh, you know, the potential is that, um, you know, that, uh, that, uh, our, our, um, the parent apple pioneers, uh, the recent state, local government, professional management, they won the challenge. And, um, they've, yeah, attracted in excess of 100 teams, um, each year from across Australia and New Zealand. So, um, now the borders are open, you might be able to get a, if there's a, a, a final, you might be able to get a gig in New Zealand or something, something like that. Adelaide, is it? Oh, there you go. The, the city of churches, so that would be worth going to. Um, yeah, so congratulations, well done.
Uh, thank you for bringing that to our attention, councillor Murphy. But this is going to sit on the radar, so I appreciate that. But, uh, yeah, you've taken it very well and, uh, as I have done previously, but, um, looking forward to what happens next. Uh, from the council. Ben, so.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to ask, would, uh, the general managers like to provide the, uh, the, the gallery and maybe the meeting and a bit of an overview of what was achieved and what was done?
Yeah, certainly through you, Mayor. It's an annual, um, professional development opportunity, I guess. And from a good and honest point of view, we normally put a team in every second or third year. Uh, we say it's a good professional development opportunity for our staff, for our emerging leaders. Jeff Dobson was actually the captain of the pioneers this year. Charlie Hudson was the mentor of the team. And there was five other participants. Certainly one of those exercises that, um, anyone who participates in it finds it quite stressful and, and, um, full on the preparation and on the challenge day, but they always come away saying it's a, it's a great, um, development exercise and, and get a lot from it. So, uh, and it is a, it is actually a competition and, yeah, it was good to, uh, what do I say? It's really a development opportunity, it's not about winning it, but that's always a bonus.
It's about winning. And Bernie put a team in.
It was good to, um, good to take it out this year.
Thank you. Councillor Darling.
I feel like I'm watching a lame movie podcast tonight. It's incredible. Um, are you going to be a cheerleader for the councillor Murphy?
Uh, we all should be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I'll argue with that.
Well done to the team. Well done to the team. Thank you.
Uh, any other comments, questions? I'm going to ask, uh, Mayor, where's that? Councillor Perry, to close, please.
I'll consider it closed, it's moved on.
All eyes in favor, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Five six point four is the infrastructure works, uh, report for, uh, two months.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Second. Sorry, yeah, also councillor Millstone, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
That's all in the report, very detailed, usual, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Millstone. Followed in a report, thank you. Any comments, questions?
Just councillor Ennis? Just a question on the, um, the surf club beach ramp renewal, the club. What's the plan there?
I'll ask, uh, Mr. Sperry to respond to that question. Thank you.
Yes, through you, through you, thanks, Mayor. So the, that's the existing ramp, it's primarily used on the surf club for access on the beach. It's quite, uh, cracked and, and damaged, so it's, um, repair of that existing ramp.
Uh, it's not the access one.
It's the main, the main, uh, ramp that they use to take the gear down to the beach.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close the debate.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favor, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Five six point five is the development and health services report for the two months. Don't move it, please.
So moved. Second.
Councillor Perry and councillor Murphy, councillor Perry.
Um, detailed reporting, it's good that the breakdown of claims costs is zero, zero, zero. I'll be taken out from that, so well done, Charlie, on a very good report.
Thank you councillor.
Hee hee.
Are there any comments or questions? I'm going to ask councillor Perry to close the debate.
Consider it closed.
Motion, all eyes in favor, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Action seven is section 33, please. Section 33, please. I have a, um, a report from, uh, seven point one, Mr. Payne, of our committee meeting from the, from the, have a move, please.
So moved.
Second.
Councillor Perry, councillor Darling.
That's all there, thank you.
Councillor Perry.
An accurate, uh, report of what happened to that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments, questions? I'm going to ask councillor Darling.
Let's consider that one closed, too.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favor, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Can I now have the motion to reduce your post session? So moved.
Second.
Councillor Millstone, thank you. Councillor Murphy, any comments reminded of you?
Nothing further, Mayor.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favor, please stay on.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried unanimously. This goes to the colleagues of our audience session. Um, councillor David for this month. Thank you to the members of the gallery for your attendance. Uh, it is seven on twelve. Thank you very much.